Okay, we'll have a moment of solid reflection and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And call this meeting in the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McCorr. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have 11 exonerations for $51,324.86 minutes for October 27th, 2021. Vouchers: General County Fund, $276,723.81. Magistrate Court, $68.05. Home Confinement, $168. Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,009.30. Camp Muffley, $9,008.01.79. Mason Dixon Park, $1,003.17.41. Recreation Levy, $804. Accessory valuation, $1,006.86.72. Day Report Center, $56,023.93. Purchasing Card vouchers: General County, $23,555.61. Magistrate Court, $30.56.911.167.64. Chestnut Ridge Park, $242.32. Camp Muffley, $533.19. Mason Dixon Park, $228.90. Accessory valuation, $3,663.87. For a voucher total of $380,186.70. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for November 3rd, 2021. An itemized statement of services for George Armstead.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we have one special fiduciary item?
Yes, it's objection to creditor claims in the Matthew Thomas Howell estate.
Okay, House, what's commission's pleasure on that?
I move to refer these objections to a fiduciary commissioner for proper hearing.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other fiduciary items?
No.
Okay, and with my fellow commissioners' approval, I'd like to move Agenda Item 7 up to Sheriff Palmer. Sheriff Palmer has to be somewhere, so he kindly asked it he'd be able to go first.
Good morning. Thank you very much.
Morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
This will just take a minute.
These are just additional properties to be suspended for the list on Monday. We are going to have it at the sheriff's annex or overflow. That way, we can do a little bit better show of still distancing on Monday at 9 o'clock. There's no parking in the sheriff's office. They'll have to park at the parking garage. Kelly, good evening.
The only thing that we ask, and you all did this for us last year, as these come to our attention, we don't always know if there's an issue with these. And last year, I believe you gave the sheriff the discretion to suspend if he saw fit without...
Coming back.
Coming before you because there won't be another meeting.
Right.
And then we could always come back and present next week. Or I can always give that information to Renata or email it to all of you. It's just that we're finding people are not coming forward until now to say that there's an issue with their statements.
Okay. And the two properties that are listed on here, is there a reason why they're being asked to be suspended?
Yes, because they are both non-taxable entities and tickets were mistakenly created for them.
Okay.
So move.
Yeah, move to accept these two as exempt and also to grant Sheriff Palmer the authority to, at his discretion, to allow for further exemptions up till the time of the sale.
Second.
Second. Any thing for discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going back up to the top of the agenda. Have introduction, new employees, personnel changes. Do we have any? None?
Just for information for the people filming it, they're saying there's no audio. I just want them to know. I'm getting texts that there's no audio on our screen, so if they're able to fix that.
Okay.
Thank you. Can't believe people are watching.
All right, next item on the agenda is comments from the public. I'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commission can come forward, state their name and address, and have their thoughts heard. Anybody?
I think there's one.
Oh, okay. Mr. Summerlin.
Jamie Summerlin wanted to stop by. I know I mentioned this at a commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, but wanted to formally at least give you the information about our Veterans Day Parade that's going to be happening next Thursday at 6:00 PM. Lineup is at 5:00, and the commissioners are obviously welcome to participate in that. Marine Corps League 342 and VFW detachment here in town is putting that on, and we've got a pretty good turnout lined up so far. So we have that parade at 6:00 PM Thursday, November 11th. And then also, we have the 246th Marine Corps Birthday Ball happening at the Knights of Columbus on November 13th. We have Brandon Rumball, Marine, injured in Afghanistan, lost both legs. He's our keynote speaker. He's actually going to be our parade marshal for the parade as well. And Bobby Nicholas Cortet will be providing the entertainment that night. So I'll leave the information with you guys to be able to take a look, and if you're interested in participating, just let me know.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Pardon me?
I'd like to address you all, please. I'm Marty Pavone, 2157 Lakes State Estates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys can maybe follow on that point right on the first page. I need your help. I'm doing a project up on Idlewood Drive, and I've had a problem with the Montague County planning. Gave us a stop work order up there for some things that the director, Andrew, and I have basically discussed. And, you know, we had a process of moving a few buildings, and it was fine. We're doing a project across the street, and I think I hurt his feelings. He wants a bus stop put up in front, wants me to pay for it, but I also pay about $400,000 a year in taxes. I told him the mountain lion would be able to take care of that out of their own pocket. Pushed it, pushed it, pushed it. And the next day on Friday, I was meeting with the bankers. That's when I met him on Monday. I got the stop work order thing. If you go right there with the pictures, he had six points on his thing. Number one was the, well, number one on mine is the driveway. That's where the driveways were supposed to be, if you see the arrow. Number two, MUB's up there with the machines. They hit the silt fence and stuff. Number three, number three is also the, number four is a 19% road grade, which MUB hasn't gone in there. MUB and the DOH do not want that, but Andrew forced that on us, which we're going to go ahead and continue to do it, but I really, it's kind of moot point. Number five is a ski slope. That's what the problem is. We had the same footprint for the buildings. We slid the building back maybe 20 feet because once we got in there on the hillside, you basically would be on the upper road with white pieces of PVC pipe coming out of the ground arc. That's the end of the driveway. The next part would be the road. And then if you follow the black tar on the wall, that's how you would get to your driveway. So in West Virginia, you all know you can't come down basically a ski slope to get to your property. It just doesn't make sense. It's not good business. Number six there is a picture of the material. That's basically one-fourth of the material we have on the job site. We probably have over $300,000 or $400,000 worth of lumber there because you can't get materials now. We ordered 100 tubs around, which is about $500 a piece, should be due here in another month, which is going to be another $50,000. We got the framers lined up. They're working. He wants to put a stop to them. We got the foundation guys there putting the footers in and stuff, wants to put a stop to them. MUB's there putting the sewer line, the water line in, wants to put a stop to them. The electric company's there putting their power in, wants to put a stop to them. Basically, if you stop this project, it's going to affect the community and me. Appreciate your help. Get this thing back on track because we really don't want to stop working. It's raining, it's wet. Christmas is coming, Thanksgiving, COVID might hit again. All the different things that we're trying to put all the fires out, but please, we need your help. It's ridiculous that you got one guy that can stop the project for no apparent reason except that he wants a little baby bus stop, which is ridiculous.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close public portion of the meeting. Presentation by Mylan Park Foundation.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Ron Justice, President of the Mylan Park Foundation Board. Terry Howes, our Executive Director, and we appreciate the time here today. And we appreciate, we've been here a number of times in the last few months, and appreciate the time and support. Today, what we want to show you is a concept, and I'll kind of put it in context and let Terry introduce the folks that will be looking at the specific project. So, and I like the way Commissioner Bloom sets timelines, so maybe I'll try to go along his timelines to give comparisons to where we were. So 18 months ago, which would have been in the aquatics world, 2012, the folks from Ascend, West Virginia, had a discussion with Mylan Park and said, you know, we don't know what will be happening in the future, but certainly would like your all's participation if possible. And we said we would love to be part of a bigger plan. And from there, there was a competitive process to identify a BMX facility somewhere within the country that an opportunity arose through all these multiple foundations to look at helping put a facility somewhere in the country. The Morgantown area, Mon County, put in an application, went through the process of multiple, multiple communities. We were chosen as a potential site for this BMX facility. So, and quite frankly, none of us knew anything about BMX at the time we were talking about it. So it was a learning process for all of us, but our board very much endorsed the concept and said, let's look at what this would mean and if it would fit and go through the process. So we've been doing that for the last few months. About six months ago, which would be equivalent to about 2014, we engaged a group that Terry will introduce you to, that BMX Foundation, and brought to us and said, hey, these folks are the best in the country to look at this opportunity. What we quickly learned is this opportunity that we're going to show you, there's no other facility in the state of West Virginia, period, that would have these amenities that could add to the quality of life of recreation. And I wanted to say that there's been a lot of movement in Mon County and with many proposals on recreation, and we support all of those at the Mylan Park Foundation. We stand behind everything the city's doing and the county's doing to help enhance the quality of life, and we embrace that. So when they did get on site, that vision of a BMX facility went a little beyond, went a lot beyond the initial concept of a BMX facility. It went to, you all have so many other amenities here, especially with the stepping stones and pace. We could make this an all-access type facility that could be one of the only ones in the whole country that would allow folks to be able to use facilities like this. So we really embraced that, and we actually started looking at our lower area of the park as a fit that this could be and did some master planning with that. That's what you're going to see today. These are conceptual. There's nothing in stone that something has to be here or be there. It's conceptual. So I do apologize if we took the liberty to go across your all's property. We'll move that off your property. But these are very conceptual. I hope we didn't do that. But long and short of it is that we have an opportunity to apply for some monies, and that's why we're here. And the way we're modeling this project is very similar to the way we've modeled others that in a bricks and mortar to try to reach outside sources to build facilities. Now, the one thing we know about this specific facility is wherever we land as we start to model the pricing, it's probably going to require it at a 20% match with some of the grant opportunities that we're looking for. So we understand that where we can reach out to others in the community and foundations. So we're not quite there yet on how we model that. But we need to get this grant opportunity in place to be considered in order to get moving. The goal would be, this would be a three- to five-year project, to have some of these facilities in place within the next 18 months and continue to build out to come to fruition with everything that you're going to see over the next five years as funding becomes available. And I want to be really clear, right now, we don't have any funding in hand for this, but we don't think we're putting the cart before the horse because in order to start to realize funding, we have to put some grant applications in. What we're specifically asking you all for today is not to be a co-applicant on that process, but to be a supporting body, whatever that's going to mean, as we start to, you know, develop this plan. So the first step of that and what that means is we certainly will need a letter of support from this body for this potential grant application and project. Again, it is a regional project that will bring national and regional events. So the second request that we would make to you all is if you could help work with Terry and Terry Cutright to reach out to your counterparts in other communities, other surrounding counties, and get letters of endorsements from other commissions because it truly is a regional facility. And we're doing the same with our CBB. Susan has been very, very supportive, asking her to reach out. Now, as I closed, I told you before, we knew nothing about this facility. So Terry Howes and Susan Riddle got to go in the Pittsburgh area to see what one of these things, one of these events could bring as far as tourism and economic impact to an area. And I will shut up there and introduce Terry and let her introduce the team, but she can tell you what they saw and why we really got excited about this. So we thank you again for this opportunity, and afterward, we'll be available for any questions.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, commissioners. This really means a lot to us, and I think the bottom line, it's going to mean a lot to the community. So that's why we're here today, and I'm not going to go on about what we saw when Susan and I, you know, stepped foot in Pittsburgh because they're going to show you a video, and I'll let you draw your own conclusions, but it was very eye-opening on what it could bring to us. So with that, I want to introduce you to our team, you know, is we have Mike McIntyre, who is with ASD, Action Sport Design, and then Justin Travis with USA BMX. And I'm going to let them take the show. Oh, I'm sorry. We've got Danny Twilly and Andrew Hoover. They're also part of our team as well as Ron, that we've been working on this now for several months, so we're looking forward to it. So I'll let you guys take the show.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to be here with us. My name is Justin Travis. I am the Director of New Track Development and the YCC Representative for USA BMX. For those of you who don't know, the YCC is the Youth Cycling Coalition, and that is actually what brought us to Morgantown and specifically Mylan Park. So Andrew is also part of the YCC and a local representative here. And Mylan Park, being the center base for the bus garage and for the community, was a perfect place for the Youth Cycling Coalition, which is 10 national-level cycling organizations that have come together to help grow cycling, bring cycling to kids in need, and to bring educational services to schools. The USA BMX Foundation has in-school and after-school STEM and track modeling programs, and we have partnered with Mylan Park to help bring those programs into the park for after-school. That's where the discussion of the facility started coming together. Once we started talking about bringing in the BMX racing track in the educational area, that's when we also got involved with other organizations from the YCC to bring in cross-country mountain biking, to bring in just general bicycle learning areas for children, families of all ages, and all types of cycling. The video that I'm going to show you right now focuses specifically on BMX racing because the grant that we are going to apply for is going to kick off the BMX racing portion of it. And then I'll go ahead and we'll introduce the plans for Mylan Park and the architect behind all of this. And I might have to hit play down here.
You can just click on the.
USA BMX Racing is a programmed and profitable recreational cycling sport that is enjoyed by children, adults, and families alike. A typical USA BMX race program operates three to four times per week and includes an open race night, a BMX racing league night specifically for beginners, and a coached practice session. Races are then broken down into both age and skill categories, with the youngest racers being only two years old and riding on smaller balance bikes with no pedals, while some of the eldest racers are in their 70s and riding on much larger bikes. The majority of participants are aged eight through 13 and then aged 30 through 45, with this last group being the parents of younger racers who enjoy being able to spend time together and to compete as a family. Most local USA BMX racing programs have between 200 and 300 active members with a weekly throughput of 100 to 200 riders, generating net profits as high as $80,000 to $100,000 per year for your recreation department. Along with a great local recreational program for your community, USA BMX has amazing sports tourism opportunities and ensures that each track, regardless of its size, is guaranteed at least one state-level sport tourism event. With the ability to earn more state-level events, a USA BMX track can contribute an economic impact of as much as $500,000 a year to the local community. If a track applies for and receives a regional event or bids on and is awarded one of our 30 national event weekends, the economic impact can be as high as $2.5 million attributed directly to sports tourism. To bring this great program to your town, all that is needed is a USA BMX racing facility. An average facility will fit inside the space of a soccer field. USA BMX works directly with ABA Ethos to design and build your turnkey and maintenance-free facility. ABA Ethos has architects and consultants on staff that are able to serve as owners' representatives and guide you through the entire process. When it is not being utilized for USA BMX recreational programming, the track will be available for public use at all times, serving as a pump-track-like facility for mountain bikes, scooters, skateboards, and BMX-style bikes. This is a win-win as now your city will have a passive-use facility that is serving an essential recreational purpose as well as the ability to operate a profitable recreational program. Serving as the cherry on top, USA BMX will send a representative to your new facility to train your key staff members in all operational aspects of a BMX track. Through our sanction agreement, we will handle membership services, points tracking, integrated marketing software, event insurance, coach training, program scheduling, racing event management software, and educational opportunities through the USA BMX Foundation-accredited STEM and track modeling programs. With more multi-generational participation than any other sport, what is your city doing to prepare for the demand of the Sports and Fitness Industry Association's fastest-growing sport over the last five years?
Hopefully, with a little bit greater understanding of what BMX racing is, some quick facts about USA BMX. We are the national sanctioning body for BMX racing. We have almost 60,000 active members. We are an Olympic sport. We're currently working on our seventh Olympic qualifying level facility. They're known as Supercross tracks. It is our new world headquarters in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And with me today is the architect of all of those tracks for the Olympic level in the United States. This is Michael McIntyre from Action Sports Design, and Mike is going to take it over from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I got to tell you, I am very excited about this concept for Mylan Park. What makes us different than what Justin was showing is you saw a lot of old-school dirt BMX tracks. The sport, the technology, the Olympic-level facilities have changed so much that they're now becoming more all-inclusive bike and wheel-friendly environments. The concept for Mylan Park that we're working for the grant is inclusion, having it barrier-free and dealing with mobility, including Paralympic activities, which has not been done for the Olympic sport of BMX. So what we're looking at is kind of having the world's first all-inclusive wheel park located within Mylan Park. I think everyone's familiar with the footprint here. And programmatically, for the EDA grant, we're focusing more on the anchor, the BMX racetrack facility. But in tandem to that is seeing how that would work with the future field expansions for Event Overflow Team Tens, Event Plaza, Awards, Bicycle Flow Trails, Pump Tracks, Single Track Trail Skills Level. And all of this would be hard surface, so for maintenance issues, that would be what it typically is with a dirt surface. And then also, it would enable those on scooters, skateboards, bikes to be included and also have stuff that's barrier-free, even if you wanted to participate in a wheelchair or a modified bike, mountain bike, to actually race and have the first mobility racing at Mylan Park. So it has not been done before. So this is very important for the grant for fundraising and other activities that I've seen. This is a concept rendering of the modification and strengthening of a central colonnade way through here to access both for the new field expansion, restrooms. So there's a lot of shared activities between the restroom, concession, parking, brother activities. There's existing RV parking hookups here, which could become food court areas, bicycle playground, instructional pavilions, straight rhythms, flow lines, and then future phases that also help bring outside funding, like a future Olympic freestyle. Park up here, that became Olympic this last year in addition. So this is just a concept plan for the grant, which is really narrowing into the track is the first kind of program element. What you can see, this is the Rockstar Energy Bike Park in Houston that we completed. And you can see this is clay surface. This would be more concrete acrylic surface instead and synthetics. This is Rock Hill, South Carolina, and then it'll be up here from Houston. So we're working on a real high-level track facility, and we would look at using acrylic sport court surfacing, like a basketball court, test court material, and other things to create the longevity of the maintenance and also accessibility and mobility to participate in racing, all the way down to RC Car Racing Night, to you name it. It could be very adaptive for other activities. So we're so excited about it. I do have something for Terry and Ron. I'll take a little side note for us. I think this is going to resonate worldwide, so I just want to give you guys something here. You want something? And we have had a lot of success with, it could be the Vance Park in Boston, where Vance put in 1.5 million to, there's a lot of opportunities to fundraise outside of just this EDA grant for the BMX track. So we believe in it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And depending on time allowances, we're able to field any questions that anybody has.
Well, first of all, just by giving the check shows that you're part of the process. And I think it's a lot easier to say, okay, you come and come back, and we're not going to be a part of it. And I think that's really important. Second is, I think the all-inclusive... Second is, I think the all-inclusive community park with everything else that's in Mylan Park is a no-brainer, and I'm very excited. I think this is just one more step for our community and quality of life, and I think our community really supports these programs. I think we're one of the few that really have reached out to make it all-inclusive with a number of, you know, from the baseball fields to, you know, the programs that we offer. Very excited.
Yeah, it's especially exciting, the all-accessibility. I mean, with that park out there, with the stepping stones field and what we've been able to do, that's, I think it's vitally important, from what you've said. Would that be the first one?
It will be in the world.
Fully accessible. I mean, that opens up all kinds of avenues for events and to attract it nationally, so and grant opportunities as well. So I commend you for that.
Thank you.
When do you anticipate moving dirt?
Moving forward, yeah.
I know you're talking about grants and stuff, but.
Yeah, Mike mentioned that. So our goal would be to get application in as soon as we possibly can. We think, at least on the BMX facility, if things align and we get everything put together, we could potentially start late summer on this. The good thing about all these facilities, with maybe exception of the restrooms, concession area, is there not long construction projects? So, you know, again, it will unfold as we realize the funding, but we could start as early as this summer. So that would be the goal, I mean.
Do you know the price yet?
I don't want to say this as 100% guarantee, because I don't want to step on you all, but basically, they've told us, if you all build this, we can get a national event here by 2023, potentially. So that would be our goal, is to make that deadline if possible.
It's the, so we made a guarantee for a sports tourism event. We would do two nationals, and it would be in the third year and fifth year of operation. So once we got up and rolling, if the BMX racing track was able to become operational at any point next year, 2022, the first national would be 2024, and then the second national would be 2026. And those are the premier-level events that you saw on the video that bring in the sports tourism crowds, the large ones.
And I know you mentioned earlier, Ron, you mentioned the tie-in with the ASCEND program, but what, and I know Danny's here, what is, what is kind of the tie-in with the ASCEND program, or how does this, does one assist the other? Thanks for coming by. Good morning.
Oh, good morning. It's so, it's so great to see you all again, and it's really in partnership. This is part of the vision that we shared with you. Feels maybe a year ago, it's all kind of running together, but it's, this is in, we're joined at the hip on this one. We developed this together. We're supporting this with our time, talent, and financially as well. But this is part of that larger trail plan to create access to healthy recreation. You know, we have softly been putting, we believe that we can get access to most people within the greater area, within 10 minutes or less from their door, and this will be a key, key component of that. The other thing that we've shared with you all as part of the ASCEND program, it's really about that idea of us being an active, healthy, vibrant community. And, you know, I was just down in Bentonville, and I'll share just a quick story, and that community has transformed itself, and one of the key elements that they've done that in all of northwest Arkansas, it's one of the fifth fastest-growing places in the United States, was trails. And the person they call the Wizard of Oz, his name's Gary Vernon, he's been doing it down there for about 15 years, and he said, if I had to build one thing, one thing only, it would be what their version is called Rail Yard, and it's in Rogers. And so I come back, and it's the first time he's ever said that. I've been going there for five years, and I brought that back to these guys, and I said, look, like, that's pretty profound for me. And they said, well, we know that, that we think this is going to be more comprehensive, and when we saw this, it's absolutely true. So I think this becomes that anchor of that new, that narrative of how we advance that community forward. It's going to, when we are able to share this more broadly with our ASCEND community, we've been working with Morgantown Area Partnership on it as well. This is a piece to that larger trail narrative and active community that we're trying to help advance in partnership. So this, to say I'm blown away by what, by what this project could do and mean, I've, you know, I, these guys have traveled the world looking and doing these projects. I don't think there's another project that has traditional sports integrated with these action sports, with these already foundational facilities. That's the key piece to this. It's like that one-stop, you know, location, and that's a really powerful narrative, is that you come to Mylan Park, you can swim, you can swing, you know, a bat, you can play on the fields, you have indoor space. So it's this, and you can camp, right? I mean, so it's this really comprehensive view. So we're in partnership in this on several fronts, and it's absolutely the story that will really continue to elevate that, the ASCEND program. And just as an aside, we have almost 20 ASCENDers already in town.
Great. Thank you, and I think it's kind of a chicken and an egg. I think your program helps push ideas like this forward, and these ideas help further your program, so I think it's a good relationship.
Absolutely. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you. Anything else, guys? Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Colleen Kuhn Grants. None? Okay. Correspondence.
Well, the first thing is an updated COVID-19 testing and vaccination schedule that was submitted to us by Dr. Smith at the Health Department, starting, I think this is supposed to be for this week. Monday, 8 to 12; Tuesday, 12 to 4; Wednesday, no testing; Tuesday, or Thursday, 8 to 12; and Friday, 8 to 12. Vaccinations starting next week at the REC Center, which is this week. Monday, 1 to 3, and that's the Pfizer vaccine. Wednesday, 8 to 4, that's Moderna.
Okay. And I think they're going, at least for the next three weeks, that's their schedule.
Three weeks, okay. We also have the first quarter levy fund disbursement report for the Mon River Trails Conservancy. It'll be on file here. Received a resignation letter, or I'm sorry, not a resignation letter, a reappointment, a request to be reappointed. Fred Friend, who's serving on the Deckers Creek Public Service District, his term expires at the end of this month, and he wishes to be reappointed. So we'll advertise for that vacancy, and then, or not vacancy, but we'll advertise for that expired position and see if we get any other applicants. We also received notice from Michael Sims, who is working on the Public Defenders Corp. Darlene Dunn, who was an appointee of the Commissions, she has resigned from that position. So we'll need to find another person for that. Also, there's a fiscal year 21 financial, county financial statement that's on file, and then some correspondence, and another, some more correspondence from the Dr. Smith at the Health Department regarding issues with COVID. I'm not sure how much you want to get into.
Oh, it was basically a COVID update in regards to the county, so just good information. So just note it, note it receipt. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Commissioner, any correspondence? Commissioner Arnett? Okay. All right. Unfinished business? We have none. New business. Consideration to Initiate Public Publication Process and Declare Intent to Improve Adjusted Montague County Magisterial District Boundary Lines. County Clerk Carrie Blaney and staff, do you guys want to come up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you on the table is a map representing recommended changes to the magisterial districts for the county. West Virginia Code and the legislature has required the counties to take a look at their magisterial districts based on the 2020 census population. Montague County census numbers came in at 105,822. We have three magisterial districts, so our target for our districts was to get 35,274 people between the Central, the Western, and the Eastern District. The map that we're presenting to you today does that. Each of the districts are within 1.5% of one another, and it represents the least amount of changes for the public to have to digest. So the only two changes that we made from our current magisterial districts was we moved an area which we knew as Precinct 76, which was above Star City, into the Central District from the Western District. And we moved a portion of what we know as Precinct 38 in the Eastern District, the area between, specifically between West Virginia Route 7, as you leave Brookhaven to the Preston County line, between West Virginia Route 7 and the summer school McKinney Cave Road area. That section, we moved from Eastern into Western. So there were two small changes that allowed us to get our, equalize our population between the three magisterial districts and keep a very tight representation there. So that is the map that we'd like to present to you. I'd like to thank Scott Isles, our Elections and Vote Registration Manager, Taylor Sebastian, Cal Schamberger, Mike Paul, our GIS Coordinator for the County, Patty Booth with our Planning Commission, and Kevin Kuhn and Frank LaFawn with the West Virginia GIS Technical Center. All of us have worked together on starting to dissect the information that we're getting from the legislature and from the United States Census. This is the map that we recommend to the County Commission to change the magisterial districts. We will be working on precinct changes now that we have our House of Delegate districts and our senatorial districts. We started working on that yesterday, actually, and we have, over 20 of our 41 precincts have been cut into multiple areas. So we will have a lot of work ahead of us as we move forward in changing our precincts. But this is the first step in the redistricting process, and once the commission gives their intent to approve magisterial district changes, these will be posted around the county and at the courthouse for a period of more than 14 days, which is pursuant to the Senate Bill that was passed by the legislature. We have received approval to publicly, or to display those in public at our public libraries, at the Cheat Lake Library, the Clinton District Library, and the City of Morgantown Main Library on Spruce Street. So there will be a public display in each of the three magisterial districts, as well as here at the courthouse.
Okay. You have any questions?
No. Do I need, do we need to move to consider it, or?
Well, let's go ahead and move, and then I'll have conversation.
Move to consider to initiate the publication process and declare intent.
Okay.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You revise your.
I'll revise it to make it, sorry, I read the lower part, I didn't read, I apologize. Pursuant to West Virginia Code 7-2-2 and Senate Bill 3034, I move to approve a notice of intent to change the magisterial district boundary lines in Mon County in response to the recent 2020 census, with our intent to order these changes on December 1st, 2021.
Boy, that has a tongueful.
I know.
Do I have a second?
I was looking at everything else.
Okay. So discussion, any, any discussion?
No.
Thank you, Carrie, and I do think, appreciate that you pointed out that you made the least amount of changes.
Yes.
You just really kind of tweaked some areas and corrected some things, and I think it's fairly, fairly sensible proposal. I know we met twice and walked through a bunch of different proposals, but we really allowed you and your staff to, to kind of figure out what made the most sense for, for everything, and I certainly defer to your staff's experience and assistance in this process. I would like to note that it's pretty interesting, the census, now that we're kind of looking at the census numbers really close, that where, where the growth is in the county. I did notice that the cities, I had two cities that increased in population. That would be Morgantown, which increased by about 2.32, that was only about 687 people. But Granville increased by 574. Based on their population, that's a 73% increase, which I think is primarily probably Blackbeard Village, that's up in the UTC. We also had, some of our cities had slight decreases. Westover had negative 28, and Star City lost 46, which was a 2.5. But the unincorporated area of the county gained 8,499 residents, so that's about a 14% increase. Overall, as a county, we increased 10.01%. So didn't really look at those census numbers until you started presenting that information to us, and so I do thank you for your thoroughness in this process, and we're looking forward to seeing it through. You had mentioned the 14 days, and I believe with the commission, it's our intent on the meeting on the first?
Yes.
To, then to bring up the full approval. So December 1st, we're looking at, provided that nothing changes and we don't get any significant feedback, that we'd be approving this, so. Anything else? All right. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. I will, yes, the commission, the language in the code requires 30 days. However, the West Virginia Legislature, because the census was, they did not receive census numbers at the legislature until later in the year. Inside of Senate Bill 3034, they extended the deadlines, and so they modified for a 14-day public comment period, which with, since you've initiated your intent today with an order on December 1st, that gives more than the 14 days for the public to be reviewing these maps. The magisterial districts, this will also be published in the newspaper, of course, but magisterial districts affect candidates, voters, or persons who may be interested in becoming a candidate for a special contest that would require a residency requirement in a certain magisterial district. And the part of Senate Bill 3034 also extended the deadline for counties to make changes until January 22nd. Candidate filing will begin on January 10th. So we certainly wanted to make sure that our citizens in our county had as much available opportunity to know what our changes were going to be, instead of waiting until January. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next item under new business. Consideration to Approve a Maintenance and Support Agreement with the Demnia Identity and Security USA LLC for the period of January 26, 2022 through January 25, 2023, for the LiveScan System at the Montague County Justice Center.
So move.
Second? Okay. And for, for the record, this is the $5,305 for the year, which represents about a 5% increase over last year, and it's just a continuation of the same agreement. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration to Approve the Purchase and Sign the Software License Agreement between the Montague County Commission and Amelia Technologies for the SmartRec e-commerce platform for activities and recreation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Manette, anything that you would like to add about the software?
The initial POP is, period of formance is just through the end of this fiscal year. So this is an eight-year agreement, I mean, eight-month agreement, to get us through the end of the year, and then during planning time, we'll then plan out from there. The software fees are $799 a month. There's a service fee, 1% of all transactions. Payment processing fees, 2.75 on credit cards with a $0.30 per transaction charge. E-check would be 1% with $0.50, and then there's a one-time professional fees for setup of $5,000. So all that's included in this agreement. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration to Approve Funding for the United Way of Montague County Preston and Preston Counties for Operation of a Cold Shelter During the Winter Season. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve $10,000.
Okay. Second? Any discussion, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear, and I think the public. Yeah, I just want to clear, and I think the public needs to know, that this is a collaboration agreement with the Bartlett House, United Way, Salvation Army, Upper Ramada Inn, and the City of Morgantown will also be putting $10,000 in, and that's the key, we've been requesting a collaboration, and everyone's working together, and I want to thank everyone for this.
Thank you. Anything, okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consider for approval requisition number 53 for the University Town Center Administrative Expense Fund. A motion?
So, move.
Second, Renata?
Requisition is for $1,075, and this is for monthly invoice from Unicat for their services.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Consideration for approval, release of RFP 2021 MCC hyphen CRP 001 for sledding, hill, slope grading, and tow rope installation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second, any discussion? Basically, we're, we've, we've already utilized an engineering firm and a county surveyor to develop a site development plan, and now this RFP is to carry out that plan, so we wanted to make sure that the, the sledding hill at Chestnut Ridge Park was professionally designed, and, you know, made sure, take all, all safety aspects into account, and now that we have that detailed site plan, we're putting this RFP out for someone to execute it, so. Anything else? We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is that all of the new business? Okay, reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Okay, seeing none. Reports from county commissioners, Tom?
This has been a really positive meeting, and I really want to thank Carrie and the staff for what they've done, and that's probably caused me to make this next statement of my frustration. Four weeks ago, I spoke against a new plan for, for dividing our county into two state senatorial districts. Our county meant the population numbers to have one district to represent all of the county residents. And yesterday, I finally was able to review the specific lines that were drawn that separated our county district into Senatorial District 13 and Senatorial District 2. And just to remind the public, Senator Trump first came out with a map that the public had seen, and only seven counties, I'm correct, were split up, and kept the Montague County whole. The new map, which no one had seen, not any constituent, and it was the night before it was brought to the senators, has 13 counties split up and carved two of the largest counties in the state, in Canal and Mon, and Montague County. My concern is, the process was flawed, and I just question why. And when I ask this question, this is the reasons why. One, the state constitution made it very clear to follow county boundaries. This was purposely not done in Montague County, for whatever reason. It does not follow any county magisterial boundary lines. And third, Ashen Estates was removed from the 13th district and placed in the second district. So, these residents now will be part of Mon, Marion, entire county of Tyler, Wetzel, and Dove Ridge County. For what reason, when they could have just had one Montague County? Now, what I'm a little confused is, I happen to live in Ashen Estates, and I do not understand why the senators decided to keep Westover, Granville, and Osage in the 13 districts, but went all around to find where I live with my residents, and moved it into another senatorial district. It's just very frustrating, and, and I feel that this was done inappropriately, and actually, in a way, appears to give the residents where we live in Ashen Estates almost inconsequential when trying to pick a state senator with all those other counties involved. And I just believe the citizens of Montague County deserve an answer, and that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Jeff?
Just wanted to echo the, the comments about our county clerk Carrie Blaney and her staff, the amount of information they had to put together in a very short period of time is truly astounding, and so, thanks to Carrie, Scott, Taylor, Kyle, Mike, Patty, Kevin, and Frank for all your hard work. Carrie's office continues to be the leader in the state, you don't have to ask anybody. Election night, our results are up and posted long before anybody else in the state, and we have one of the larger counties, so just a tip of the cap to you and your staff, and thank you for all your pro.
Thanks, Jeff. My report since last Wednesday's meeting, last Thursday, I attended the retirement party for Kathy Karen at the Health Department. On Friday, we had staff reports, we had our full broadband initiative team meeting, and then I went to Mohawk Bowl, which interestingly enough, if Morgantown somehow wins and things can change, they could end up playing the first round of the playoffs.
Yes.
So, that'd be, that'd be really interesting. Monday, we had a special work session, as I indicated earlier, with the clerk and her staff, and then I had sync, sync call with our broadband consultants in the afternoon. Tuesday, I had a monthly breakfast with Joe Statler on Lidl, and former Superintendent DeVano. Today, we had, before this meeting, we had our call with Green County, we have a regular day and full day of work sessions, and then I have broadband stakeholders meeting this evening. Tomorrow, COVID booster shot, I'm getting my COVID booster shot, so anybody out there, please use the different entities that are providing those shots, and go get yourself scheduled. And then the afternoon, I have a Mon County Fair discussion. Friday, we have staff reports, and we have a vehicle discussion regarding our fleet. Monday, there's a national 4H leader that's visiting Mon County, and I will be meeting with that person at the Extension Building. Tuesday, we have a Juma meeting in the morning, and then there's a Mon County Leadership Forum. Tom, are you participating in that?
Yes.
On Tuesday? I don't, I didn't see your name on the email, but appreciate Eldon Callan, who works for the, the partnership, is putting that together, and so, they had a leadership forum with the, the delegates and senators, and now they're doing one with the local, local officials. So, Tom and I will be representing Commission, and then there'll be representatives from meets and municipalities, so another good opportunity to, to get together and collaborate and talk about things, and things where we can work together. I do want to echo the comments regarding Carrie, Carrie and your staff. I was watching the election results last night, and I was like, why can't this be Mon County? I was waiting and waiting and waiting for, for results to come in, and when it's three hours after the polls close, and you've got, you're hearing about counties that are only 40% returns, you're like, boy, they need to talk to Carrie and her staff, so, thank you, Carrie, I appreciate it. I do want to point out one, one serious bit of information, you may have noticed that there was an article in the paper this Sunday about our camp, Camp Muffley, and it was on the front page of the paper, and I wanted to, obviously, this is an ongoing investigation and legal process, so the Commission isn't commenting, but I want the public to know that we're being totally transparent, but we have to respect the process. I do want the public to know that as soon as we found out, we immediately informed the experts and solicited their assistance in ensuring that this was a thorough and fair process, and I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, State Auditor JB McCuskey and his staff, because we immediately talked to and, and communicated with each of them to, to move this process along. Now, the most important reason I'm bringing this up, because I want anybody out there in the public that had a, an event scheduled at Muffley in 2022 or beyond, to please make sure that you contact Muffley Park Office to make sure that we have you on the books, and that there's nothing that drops through the cracks. The last thing we want to do is have something that was planned or discussed that might drop through the cracks, so I think it's important that we bring it up, and at least let people know. Contact the park office, our park superintendent, our director of park superintendents, JR Petsko, has been covering the park as we work through the process of obtaining another park superintendent, but, and so those, he'll, he'll get that information, or someone on his behalf, and make sure that he's got you booked. So, again, it's, it's not always pleasant to air dirty laundry, but we try to be transparent, and we put it all out there, and, you know, let the public make those, make any assumptions that they want to, so. Having said that, I will entertain, and thanks to Mylan Park for every, for your guys' effort in continuously raising the bar, and, and creating opportunities at your park for the community. You know, last week, we had the discussion about the Learn and Swim Program, again, this is continuing. Tom said that it, I wasn't really sure what we were talking about today, but Tom said it was going to be greater and bigger and better than what we talked about last week, and it is, so, and I'm excited about it, so, looking forward to actually seeing dirt move, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1789.48]